That should keep new members away.
I think Larry's thinking of coming over.
This appears to be when we're at our best.
We have a slew of cyber rotarians with us this morning. And I will start with the biggest dignitary from the Rotary Club of Sebastopol, past district governor Bob Rogers.
Hey Bob.
Morning Bob.
Morning Bob.
Morning, everybody.
Rotary Club of Sebastopol, our assistant governor, Jack Blasco.
Morning.
Good to be here.
Hey Jack, good morning.
And from the Rotary Club of Santa Rosa East, right Marilyn? We have Marilyn Lira.
Hey Marilyn.
Governor, but she's not ours. Jack's ours.
I'm a lieutenant governor, but yeah, I'm like Jack's boss.
Yeah. Oh, you're Jack's boss. I should have introduced you before, Jack. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. And then we have.
It's 2021 Barbara, that's okay.
Okay, from the Rotary Club of Santa Rosa East, we have Larry Lira. So we have both Liras. Then, and not last but not least, we have two, two huge dignitaries from the Rotary Club of Sparks, Nevada. Past District Governor Bruce Campbell. Woo-hoo. From the Rotary Club of Sparks, past District Governor Helene Campbell. So, wow-hoo.
Does that make him Spark's Campbell?
And then I don't think we have any cyber guests, so. Wave to your friends. Good morning, everybody. It's good to see y'all. And I get to mute everybody. Yay, it's my job. Woo-hoo. Okay, so here we go. We have a couple of birthdays. Is Gus with us this morning? I haven't seen him, so we'll have to celebrate next week. And then Brian Bauer, I know I saw you come in. Ellen has a birthday on Sunday.
Oh, yes, thanks for the reminder.
How could you forget?
No, I remember. I just gotta figure out something to do.
Well, I have a suggestion and it's gonna come up in a little bit, yes?
Barbara, it's Rod. I'm also March 16th.
You are? Why aren't you on my list?
Well, I'm trying to avoid it.
Well.
It's the big 7-7, so.
You're working, Rod.
Well, happy birthday. What are you gonna do to celebrate?
Probably have some cake.
Well, that's good.
That's about it.
Are you gonna have ice cream with your cake?
Oh, sure.
Okay, well then that's a twofer. Are you gonna cook fancy dinner or are you gonna get takeout?
Well, I don't know. I don't have any control of that. Probably corned beef and cabbage.
Oh, that makes.
Irish soda bread.
Right, right. That sounds fun. Well, happy birthday.
Thank you.
I hope you have many, many more.
I do too.
So we have no anniversaries. Okay, now here's Gus. Maybe I screwed up again.
You have another birthday.
What?
Another birthday.
Who?
Wife Eileen on the.
Jesus. Say what?
My wife Eileen on the 16th.
Okay, you're not on. See, I have this list. You're not on, she's not on the list. Why don't you shoot Michael Fells the.
Sure reminds me of my. Information.
Yeah. So, what are you gonna do to celebrate your birthday?
Hasn't been this bad since 2004.
That should be finable.
Yeah, well, we'll get there. Okay, so.
Miss Linda's birthday last week.
Can we have a recall?
And Richard's birthday in two weeks.
Yeah, well, I got that one.
Barbara knows our birthday.
Okay, onward. Linton, is Linton with us? Is Linton with us? I don't see him coming.
He's out singing in the rain.
I did see Joyce here this morning, so Joyce.
Linton's there.
Is Linton here? See, I can't see everybody.
I'm here.
There's Joyce.
There's Joyce.
Is it already one year?
So Joyce, it's your one-year anniversary of joining this Motley Crew. Congratulations. Congratulations. Do you have any moments or anything that you want to share about what Rotary means to you or what this Motley Crew means to you?
There's so much to share and so many, so many things I want to share, but there's no time. So since this last year has been such a crazy time with COVID, what turns out in my mind is how everybody in this group likes to share. And the first share of where the COVID vaccine was going to be, and I was so excited about that and went onto the website and signed up and I was so thrilled that I was going to be the one of the first ones, only to be canceled. But that was something that really made my heart sing that everybody is always willing to share so quickly, so fast, with so much enthusiasm and I just love being part of this wonderful, wonderful group. Yeah.
Thank you. We're glad to have you. And yes, it's been a rather unusual year. Now, Linton, can we say Linton is here? See, I can't see everybody, so I'm not sure who all is really here. I'm not seeing.
He's on the list. He's.
No photo, but just a live picture, just his name.
Yeah, I see that now. So, oh, well, okay, Linton, congratulations on your Rotary anniversary. And now we've got a chat.
Hello.
Okay.
There he is.
There he is. Linton. It's your Rotary anniversary on the 16th.
Yay, this month. Same, same. We got two other birthdays on that, huh?
Yeah, anniversaries, yeah. So, is there any particular, I know the first thing you did before you even Rotarian was go to Nepal on a telemedicine project.
Nepal, India.
India.
Is there any other Rotary moment that really makes your heart go pitty pat?
I guess I would have to say when Gail invited me, really. And then, I think I've said this before, I just feel like I know, you know, 50 people in town I can trust. And it's great to meet you all every week. You know, I don't have family here, so that makes a big difference.
Yes, it does. It does. Makes a huge difference. Yeah.
But you do have family. It's called Rotary Family.
Absolutely.
Chosen family.
The chosen family. So here's what's going on. March 14th, of course, deal at Savings Day. Leap forward. Monday is our club board meeting and anybody who wants to attend, the Zoom information is on the calendar on the club website. Is that correct, Jim? Good enough?
Oh, the calendar.
Yeah, 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 get over it.
Easy for you to say.
Easy for you to say. The other new thing is the SCARC meeting on March 25th. Alley of the Moon is hosting and the topic is going to be a project called Hand Wash and it's water and sanitation project in Haiti. I will send the information out when we, as we get closer. Other than that, this is more or less the same old, same old, and we'll get to other stuff. On Monday, on Monday, I mean Monday. Okay, this morning is not working right. Sunday. Pi-day. So enjoy the pie of your choice, please. Eat pie, eat pie often. Okay, weekly announcements. David Mark Raymond, you had an experience last weekend.
Says upcoming. I did. I went to the online, completely online, right here from my chair. Pets Training, President-elect Training Seminar. And it started Friday evening at around 6:00, then went to 9:00 the next day from 9:00 to 10:00. And I'm talking about 10:00 in the evening, so a long time. And the next morning, from 9:30 till noon, I believe. So my head is swimming, my heart is full, and my sitting bones are really tired of chairs.
Yes. Well, guess what? You got your butt in a chair this morning again. So thank you very much for going to Pets and thank you very much for being here this morning.
It was actually quite awesome. All sorts of amazing people showed up, lots of chatter, lots of talk. And some pretty, you know, some high-level dignitaries. We were addressed by former Rotary President John Germ and lots and lots of people. It was quite wonderful. You'd want to do it yourself.
I've been there, done that, so. Anybody who wants to be president can go to Pets. Yes, and Marilyn says that she heard the Hawaiians had a Mai Tai party.
Always.
Always. Okay, so then we have Michael Cook. Do you want to say anything quickly about our auction that's coming up?
Yes. So we are gathering items and figuring out how to plug them into our software. So we'll have an online auction that will be open for two weeks. And some new items have been coming in and Jim Guam has generously offered to do a piece poll. And that's a big ticket item for us and we're in the throes of putting it together. So we'll do a screenshot in another week or so so you can get a preview of what it will look like. But it's got a lot of online reading for me to figure out the software, but it's working now, so looking forward to it.
When is it gonna be, Michael?
We were talking March 29th to start it, but then there was a, so we'll decide after this meeting, I think, but we were thinking maybe to postpone it to the the weekend or maybe even the day after Easter, which is April 4th. So we're kind of waffling on when the open is up. But we will publish that along with the graphics that Scott has put together for us, so we're on a construction phase right now.
Super. And your meeting today after this meeting?
Right, 8:30 till 9:00.
Okey-dokey, that'll be a quickie. And anybody who wants to stay, you just stay on this meeting and you'll be at the right place. So Charlie Judson. Are you here, Charlie? I guess not. So next week's.
No, I am here.
You are there. Okay, go for it.
And this, this announcement is really important, so listen carefully. Okay, thank you. When, that's an inside joke for those that weren't here last week. But next week is Isaac Ashwager. He's the, I suspect he's the only Farsi-speaking lawyer in Sebastopol. He is a really interesting guy. You may have seen over the last few years, stories in the Press Democrat about the Ronan Park policing for-profit program where they were pulling over people up in the Cloverdale area. The Ronan Park Police were in Cloverdale on the freeway. Isaac defended, not only defended some of those people, but also helped them file suit against the Ronan Park Police Department. There are others, you may have seen others. He's a champion of the downtrodden and people whose civil rights have been trampled by government or whose assets have been forfeited by an overzealous government. So we'll hear from him tomorrow, about next Wednesday.
Thank you. And we're gonna start doing this every week as a suggestion. It was a suggestion from the membership committee that we announce the week before what our program is the following week so that you can invite friends, neighbors, or anybody else who may be interested in our program to join us at our meeting. And this also is one of the programs from our task force. So thank you very much to our task force for bringing this program to us. And here is a lovely picture, Michael McLaughlin. Do you want to say anything about?
Yeah, this is, we're working with the Special Ed Consortium here in town. And this is one of the pieces of PPE that actually we bought them the material and they made the gowns themselves. And then we also supplied them with some Chromebooks and some shields and all sorts of stuff, and they're very, very grateful for it.
And we also, this week and last week, delivered to Apple Blossom School and to the consortium classrooms some oversized canopies. They're 27 point, 26 feet, 7 inches and 10 feet, 8 inches, I think. Canopies that they are going to be installing outside so that the students can be undercover when they're doing their hybrid learning outside. And when I was at Apple Blossom School delivering the canopy, they were in the process of installing the shade sails. So I'll go back next week and when they're installed and take pictures so that we can show you pictures of the shade sails. Now, these are all the district grant funds that we did, the district grant in conjunction with the Sebastopol Club. So, thank you. Whoops. That it? Okay, Michael McLaughlin, if you can just say quickly two words about next week's event at the food bank?
Yeah, next Wednesday from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, we are at the food bank one more time. We're gonna do this on a monthly basis. And sign up is on the website. Please sign up so we know how many are going to be coming. We want to have at least seven or eight people. So Joe signed up with Patty last month and had a good time and it's a lot of fun. All socially distanced and getting safer by the day.
Yes, and I will send the link out to everybody probably Thursday or Friday so that you can have another opportunity to sign up because yes, it is, it is fun. So you guys keep doing these chats and I'm just, yeah, okay.
Talk to me behind your back.
It's hard. You know, the coffee's not strong enough this morning, obviously, because anyway, happy bucks. I have happy bucks. And I'm gonna start this off because my siblings and I, except for one brother, he has not had his second shot. We have all had our second shots. So my son, his fiancee, and her daughter are arriving on Saturday for a short visit and we are on Sunday going to be celebrating my son's engagement, my sister's partner's 90th birthday and my sister-in-law's birthday, and we are going to be eating pie. We're gonna be eating pizza and our family favorite recipe for chocolate pie to celebrate all the celebrations. And we are, unfortunately with the weather, we're gonna have to be indoors, but under the CDC guidelines, we can do it now. So we are thrilled to death. We get to meet Leann in person and Sydney and it's like, yes. Of course, now I have to clean my house, but what the hey? So those are my happy bucks and I'm making a contribution to our foundation for that. So anybody else have any happy bucks? Go for it.
I was canceled last week for my second shot and miraculously on Saturday, they called me up and rescheduled it, so I'm having it at 10:45 this morning.
Whoa.
Super, super.
Very good, very good.
I've got some happy bucks.
Good.
One, I've outlived all the males in my clan. And so I could do $77, but I'll round it up to 100.
Thank you, thank you.
I have happy bucks. I want to give a shout out to the Santa Rosa East because it's my understanding that you guys provided the lunches for the Sonoma County Medical Association Vaccination Clinic. At least that's what I was told.
We helped a lot with it. There were, there were many people involved, but yes, we did. Thank you.
Yes. And if anybody hasn't read those CDC guidelines, if you've had your second shot, you can now meet less than six feet apart, unmasked.
Yep.
So it is super.
After two weeks.
After two weeks.
Two weeks after the second shot, that's correct.
Right, right. Yeah, so we will be doing it with all the appropriate guidelines. We will be good. But it's like hop, diggity dang, yay, yippee.
Barbara?
Yes.
I'd like to point out that the stimulus plan is going to be passed today and that within the next few weeks, we're all going to be getting checks from the government and some of, we might we might consider donating some of that to our foundation so that we can contribute our good works.
Great idea.
Thank you. Good idea.
Happy buck. That is, I'm really happy about the coalition that's building inside of Sebastopol between service clubs. Rotary with Lions and VFW and all of that. And along that line, you might have noticed the pink flamingos that are going around town. That's the Seraptimists. So I paid for that to lead one side and go, so that's support for the Seraptimists and their work. And I moved it over to the Mason's Hall across from Safeway, a very visible spot, honoring the Masons for all of the great work that they do and for housing us. So I contribute to them.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much, David, for that. That's my club. I'm a Seraptemist.
Are you? Nice.
Yeah.
Good, 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 good.
Oh, I'm not sure. There might be one. I think there is one, actually.
Yeah, there is one in Sebastopol and they're doing an Easter egg program.
Speaking of getting shots and the Masonic Hall, should we start keeping track of who all has had their second shot and looking at when we might start meeting live again?
Okay, so the official word from Rotary International is that we are not to do any in-person meetings or travel through this fiscal, through this Rotary year. We'll talk about it at the board meeting on Monday. It's gonna be on the agenda, which by the way, if anybody has any agenda items for the board meeting, please shoot me an email right away.
Oh my god.
Okay, so let's move on because we have our program. I messed up, didn't I? Did I mess up?
Nope, you got it right.
No, 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 I didn't do, okay, this is my mess-up meeting and I'm messing it up. Because somewhere along the line in here, I think I have who our lucky lottery winner is and it's number nine. And Michael Fells, you weren't here yet for number nine.
Right, so did you guess who was it?
It's Michael Cook.
Oh, that's what I wrote too. How funny.
Oh, good. So Michael.
Let's get richer.
Yes, so now.
The poor get poorer.
So now. Charlie, take it away, please.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm really glad to introduce Raleigh Atkinson, who many of you already know. He's a local journalist and he started his newspaper career in his hometown of Frederick, Maryland as a daily news reporter. And then he moved to Sonoma County in 1981 and resumed his career again here with the Healsburg Tribune. He became an owner in 1995 and he started Sonoma West Publishers with his wife Sarah Bradbury. And they added other papers, including our local ones, Sonoma West Times and News, the Healsburg Tribune, Windsor Times, and the Cloverdale Revelry. He's been a Rotarian since 1988 and he's very proud of all the young journalists that they have mentored and given them a career start, even if many of them, he says, move to more lucrative fields in government and the private sector. He said that with 47 years in journalism, right now is the most exciting and challenging of times. He said, "We are writing our own story." Thank you, Raleigh. Take it away.
Welcome, Raleigh.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Good morning, sunrisers. Hope I'm prepared for this. I tried to get a little better prepared. I went to the website to see what the title of my program was, the topic, and I didn't, just had my name there, so it was kind of blank. Being early in the morning and getting off to a cheery start, I'm sure you guys would like a nice, light, happy topic. So my topic I chose is the death of newspapers. Very, very cheery. It could be, it could be worse, Marty, because if all the newspapers do die, then our democracy is going to die with it. So it could be even more bleak. It could be even more bleak than that. But don't worry, when I get to the end of this brief presentation, I think I have some positive suggestions and potential solutions that will keep our democracy thriving and keep quality journalism in place and serving all of us. But to begin with, excuse me, to begin with, in a Pew Research Center survey in 2019, 79% of all the people surveyed thought their local newspaper and most newspapers were doing financially well. The facts are a little different. In just the last eight years, one-fourth of all newspapers in America, 1,800 newspapers have gone out of business and will never return. In that same time period, half of all journalism and newsroom jobs in America, that's 30,000 and counting, are all gone forever. So let me tell you why this is happening and why it should matter to you. I can share what we've been doing at Sonoma West Publishers to stay alive and I can wrap up with a list of things we all can do to save local news, keep our democracy alive, and maybe even save my job so I can retire in a few years. Newspapers, journalists, and all news outfits are going through unprecedented historical times. And the rest of our society and culture are seeing unprecedented changes and impacts as well. But very few industries have lost half of their ranks over this short period of time. And this all started long before Trump started calling me and my cohorts enemies of the people. And it was well-dated, predates the current COVID pandemic. The business model of newspapers to make money by selling commercial advertising has been dying a slow death for much more than a decade. The Craigslist took all of our classified advertising away from us almost 20 years ago. And now Google, Facebook, and Amazon are taking all of the rest. Almost 80% of all digital advertising revenue on the internet goes to two zip codes. See if you can guess which ones they are. One is Menlo Park, where Facebook has its headquarters. And the other is Mountain View, the home of Google. 80% of all that. Eighty percent of all that revenue.
Eighty percent. Eighty percent revenue goes to Menlo Park.
Yes, and pre, pre-COVID, in the year of two thousand and eighteen, newspapers' revenue shrunk, advertising revenue shrunk almost fourteen billion dollars in a twelve-month period. And it's, and it's been plummeting since. Sounds daunting and unworkable, but that's really not the case. There, there is, there are a lot of positive stories. They're small and they're collecting. Uh, they don't outnumber the, the horrible stories yet. But, but there are some positive outlooks, and I'll get to those in a second. Uh, but about those internet giants, without a change in the antitrust laws and, and how social media is regulated, no, nobody's going to win against Facebook, Google, Amazon, Apple, and the rest. Those giants make the rules of the internet. They set all the pricing and they either buy you out or they squash you. That's, that's life on the internet. So have you, uh, have you all heard about news deserts?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's, that's those places where those one thousand eight hundred newspapers have died and, and nothing has taken their place. So in half of the three thousand counties in the United States, half of those counties ha- have only one newspaper left. And in a one hundred and seventy-one of those counties, they have no newspaper. There are, there are two counties in California, um, Alpine and Imperial, I think they are, that have no newspaper. Those are huge geographic territories with no local news. Bad things happen when a hometown loses its newspaper. Studies show that government spending and waste goes up, voter participation goes down, crime goes up, and public health goes down. Without watchdog journalists, in fact, checking news sources, lots more things go down instead of up. So what are some of the answers? The future of local news requires treating it like the public good and po- portion of the public trust that it's always been, the fourth estate. Forget about the old commercial model. Now we need a community institution model. Only a local community can save its own newspaper. Grocery, beer, and car ads, sorry, Joe, aren't going to pay the bills anymore. Citizens and readers have to pay fair value for the news. If you pay a hundred dollars a month for cable TV, like almost all of us do, what do you think reliable, accurate, and trustworthy local news should be worth? Sonoma West Publishers currently charges five dollars a month. And that's not, that wasn't enough before this, and it's certainly not enough to pr- to protect and support and sustain our future. So my wife and I, Sarah, are, we're giving our four newspapers, uh, in just a few months, we'll have the full transaction completed. We're giving our four newspapers to a new nonprofit we helped create last January, the Sonoma County Local News Initiative. So we've created a new community nonprofit institution to take, uh, operation and ownership of the newspapers. Um, they say they're considering keeping me on board and hiring me, but, um, I haven't had my interview yet. Um, it, any, any testimonies, any of you want to share, uh, let, let me know after the meeting and, uh, we'll talk. So there's a new charity cause in Sebastopol and West County. And it needs your money. Uh, keep supporting Rotary, of course. Support the Community Culture Center, the Arts Center. Uh, support your church, library, schools, museum, and the Senior Center. But we all need to support nonprofit journalism now, too. It's, it's, it's a new, uh, our, our, our model going forward with the Local News Initiative uh, is based on acquiring, uh, full revenues, forty, forty percent of those revenues will have to come from charity donations and philanthropy. You know, another forty percent will have to come straight from readers paying for the news that they value. And we'll still get some, uh, little bit of advertising, digital and, and print. We're not going totally out of print. Uh, we'll be printing special projects, uh, throughout the year. Um, but we're, we're a digital daily news outfit now. If you see our newsletter every morning, uh, we have fresh news on our, uh, website and the newsletters we blast out every day. Uh, we're not a weekly print paper anymore. We're a daily digital. And, and it's, it's working very well for us and our audience. But donation or investment in the local news is an investment in the community. It always has been. I mean, even as private for-profit owners, my wife and I and our employees have always put more back into the community than we ever took away. Uh, without giving ourselves a capital B, we're a, we're a benefit corporation for the community. And while we were, while the IRS cons- considered us a, uh, a for-profit in the twenty-six years Sarah and I have operated and owned a paper, uh, before this pandemic kicked, kicked a real hole in our budget, um, over the first twenty-four years, I, I, I did a spreadsheet of all, all the profit we made. And in the first twenty-four years of operation, uh, we made eight thousand dollars total profit.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Tell your kids to grow up and be newspaper people. It's a highly, highly lucrative though. It's, it, there's a lot of pride and satisfaction in it, but there's, there's no, no money in it, and it's getting worse. Uh, so here's some solutions and actions, you and us, and we can all take to save local news and keep our local elected officials honest. Keep promoting shopping locally, encourage lots of civic engagement, voting, civic club membership, and, and especially media literacy. Because in the, in these days dominated by the internet giants and their, um, uh, attention and manipulation media styles, uh, we, we need, we need media literacy uh, through all generations, especially with, especially with our young folks, but, but all of us need to acquire a lot more media literacy. Here's a few things to do. Check out, please, the Sonoma County Local News Initiative. Uh, that's soco localnews.org. Uh, you can find it on my website, sonomawest.com. Consider a donation. Uh, I know I'm not breaking a Rotary rule here. I'm not soliciting. Uh, none of that money goes to me anyway. It, it supports the nonprofit, just like uh, you guys were pitching your own foundation a little while ago. Uh, that mission and the Sonoma County Local News Initiative mission overlap majorly and around building good community. Here's an, here's a little piece of news. Uh, consider what, what Windsor Rotary is, might be doing with the Local News Initiative right now. We, uh, we had a grand interview with them last week, one of our board members. And the Local News Initiative has applied for a five thousand dollar grant from the Windsor Rotary to fund a full year of journalism classes at Windsor High School. Currently, Annelie and El Molino do not have journalism classes. They have after-school clubs with, with a few, uh, students, uh, and we're, we're mentoring those, um, as well. But, uh, they need, they need some funding, um, to make a full, robust journalism program, which, which leads a lot, lends a lot to increasing media literacy, of course. Starting young is, is really vital. Um, some of you, I've, I know have seen this, but I, I highly recommend the Netflix movie, The Social Dilemma. Check it out, watch it, learn what Google and Facebook are really all about. They are not our friends, quite the opposite. Uh, there's some good positive action in Congress right now, and, and there was, uh, for the last several years. So Biden doesn't get credit, Trump doesn't get credit, uh, active congressmen are doing this. There's, there's a few things they're doing, um, support, support Congress to bring antitrust laws against the internet giants. Absolutely has to happen. There's, there are two, two pieces of legislation in Congress right now to provide public funding for local journalism. It's, it's, it's a model similar to the way PBS and NPR, Public Radio and TV are currently being funded by federal funds and have been since nineteen eighty-seven. And then lastly, next, here's a, here's a commercial plug, I guess. The next Thursday, March eighteenth, uh, I think it's five to six P M., uh, Sonoma West Publishers, myself, will be hosting a Zoom panel with four prize-winning investigative journalists. So if you don't believe my telling of this story of the fate of journalism, check in and listen to the three Pulitzer Prize-winning journalists and the George, George Koch winner. And it's a live, it's a live event, so you can, you can ask them questions and, and listen to their test- testimony just as well. So, um, I'll leave it there and, and allow for time for editorial comments from my fellow Rotarians. So I, I, I miss, I, you know, seeing you on the screen like this, uh, is a poor substitute for doing makeups at the Masonic Hall Wednesday morning.
I'm, I'm going to ask you a question. You know me, I'm, uh, more than happy to stir things up. What's, what's your feeling on the board, school board combining Annelie and El Molino in the one school? I also will say this, I predicted to the politicians that those, both of those bond elections would fail. It was the wrong time. It wasn't enough money to save El Molino anyway, if it did come true. What's, what's your read of the West County and, uh, a very important school board meeting that, this evening to discuss the consolidation of those schools?
Oh, it's a, is that a question about newspapers? I don't think so.
Well, I want to know what your opinion is as a local person that covers this.
Editorial comment. You're, you're in editorial mode.
I don't, I don't, this is going to sound, I don't feel entitled to an opinion about that. I don't, I, I live in the, uh, Hillsburg Unified School District, just across the river. You know, my parcel taxes go to the Hillsburg Union School District. Um, I will, I will share some, uh, observations, Marty, and some facts. Severe declining enrollment is a hard, hard fact. And there's no trend that sees that being reversed. So that's a hard fact that has to be dealt with. And, and that, that, that comes out to a budgetary issue, a financial issue. You know, I, you know, I've, I've been in discussions with people on all sides of this issue. Um, I've, I've seen some creative thinking. I've seen some outside-the-box thinking. Uh, I do have one opinion. I don't, I don't think Measure A, which was an outside-of-the-box idea, was a good idea. I think it set a bad precedent for the county to collect county tax and then fund another government entity. That's a horrible precedent. That's a horrible precedent. Uh, but that's, that's an aside point. And then, and then I'll say something to, to get you, get you really upset here early in the morning, Marty. The, besides declining enrollment, the problem with school funding and support goes back to Prop thirteen.
I agree.
Yeah. And if you, and, and we almost got that on the table the last election. You know, we got, um, it got a, I think, thirty, forty percent vote, which is significant. Uh, it needs to come around again. And how, how our local property tax and other taxes uh, are filtered through Sacramento and not remaining locally and at home is not just a school problem, it's a local funding problem for many, many components of our community.
Michael McLaughlin.
Yeah, Raleigh, I'm totally sympathetic to you, and you know that. On the other side of it, um, you know, newspapers, if you go back in history, you used to have town criers. And they used to stand in the public square and, and shout out the news. And then, you know, newspapers came along and you put town criers right out of business. Um, so newspaper readership in the United States has been declining for quite some time. Um, your commercial, uh, ability to sell advertising has, has been diminished greatly uh, over, over the last few years. Um, and I don't personally think that a charity is the way to run a news organization. Um, I think that it needs to be some sort of public funding. Uh, and, you know, we pay parcel taxes for all sorts of stuff. Uh, five-dollar parcel tax for everyone to, uh, uh, be guaranteed local news. I don't, I think spreads that pain, uh, ac- across, uh, the, the whole spectrum. Um, and would make you much more competitive. The other thi- the other question that I have is what do you think of the, of the move in Australia to charge the internet companies, uh, for news?
Yeah, that, well, there's a mixed bag of questions. Um, yeah, the, not only does, uh, Facebook and Google, um, you know, s- steal or dominate our former revenue source, but they, they do it by stealing my news, not charging me for it, putting it in their news feeds to, to, to acquire and attract an audience. So, yeah. You know, in the, uh, state of, the state of Maryland.
Going to Kaiser, right?
Yo, mute yourself.
If it's hailing.
Patrick, mute.
Yeah.
Going to Kaiser.
We all know that now. Good luck. You know, a few, a few points, Michael. Um, you know, our nonprofit model is not a charity model. The, 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 the philanthropy and donations is, is, is just one of five sources of revenue. And reader, people need to pay for their news. Only a community can save its own newspaper. And you need to pay for it. We're, when, when we convert to the nonprofit model in June, we will take down our paywall from the website and make our local news available to all. Uh, and they, and just like the NPR model, uh, during pledge drive at NPR, you, you voluntarily pay what you think it's worth. Some can pay more, some will pay less, s- some will just get their news for free at the benefit of all the, the others of us who do find value and support it. Ju- just for clarification, at our four newspapers, from Cloverdale, Hillsburg, Windsor, to West County, we've, we're now digital, basically digital only. We, we still print the Hillsburg Tribune once a week. There, there's just a little business issue there around, we, we get some, we drive some print advertising money there, so we keep that in print. Otherwise, we'd be all digital. We, we, we have the largest audience of readers we've ever had in our one hundred and fifty-six-year history. The problem is, then they're not paying us enough to cover all the expenses of gathering, reporting, and presenting the news, because that's, you know, we, we have sixteen employees and an eight hundred thousand dollar payroll every year. Um, we divvy that out among the paid, the, the paid readers. And when we were, when we were printing papers, we had twelve thousand paid subscribers. So, you know, and they're, they were paying sixty bucks a year. And now it's digital only. So we have, we have a great essential audience. We provide essential information and news that, um, you, you, you can't, you can't get anywhere else unless you find it after Facebook steals it from us. What we're, what we're lacking is the essential revenue to pay for the essential service that we provide.
Okay, now we have PJ and then Jack Blasco. So PJ?
Hi, good morning, Raleigh. Thanks for coming on board. I appreciate that. When, um, when the announcement was made last year concerning the establishment of a nonprofit to pull the four newspapers together, I joined in on that one. And I'm wondering if, um, because I was interested in other communities and what they're up to. We bike throughout the area and, you know, it's just really interesting. But I, what I was looking forward to was having a, um, every one of the sites having a connection to all the other sites, so I could read everybody's online newspapers. I read a lot of stuff online, and I'm wondering if that's the direction the nonprofit is going to go, so that when we go to, if I went to Sonoma West, I could also just easily click and see what's happening in Cloverdale. Some overriding page ahead of all the other, uh, local newspapers.
Right, well, that, that exists now. You know, you, you may, you may enter the portal at sonomawest.com, but that, that gets you to all four newspapers. So you can read, you can read all of our news. The, the one hundred percent of our locally-generated content is, is there. You need to be, if, you need to be a registered user, but that's all that's required. We are, we are developing a new website, and it's basically for reader ease and looks um, and, and some technology updates. So it'll be a little, it'll be a little cleaner and easier to navigate. And, um, it, it's funny, we're, we're wrestling right now. We, we need a, we need a new name for the website, um, because you know, three-fourths of our operation is in the north, not the west. So Sonoma West doesn't real- doesn't really fit. And, you know, the- And, you know, the prevailing, any ideas are welcome, we uh uh uh. You can win a prize if you come up with a great name.
Free subscription.
Well, there, well, there won't be a subscription. We're not, we won't have subscribe. The new, the new model will not have subscribers, and we'll have supporters, so that that's a small change. But uh, yeah, all of our, all of our news, again, is is, it has been for a few years um at that one website.
Okay, so, uh, Jack, last question, please.
Can we blackball him, please?
No.
Oh, it's too late, it's too late, Raleigh, you know. It should have been in the mailbox yesterday, and there was, there was nothing there.
Anyone's unmute, if anyone's unmutable, it's Jack Blaskin.
First of all, I just want to say how much I've been enjoying the new daily digital format. I look forward to seeing it in my inbox every morning. Our folk, your focus today has been on local journalism um and the challenges there. And also touching on the antitrust issues associated with the big tech companies and the effect that they've been having. But I'm curious about your your feelings about journalism on the national level and the degree of consolidation that's gone on there. Um, and how you think that poses a potential threat to freedom of the press, um, freedom of ideas. And whether you think there are antitrust issues there that need to be addressed.
Yeah, there's a a a couple of, a couple of levels to respond to that. If you, if you have a, if you have a billionaire owner of your newspaper, like, like Jeff Bezos owns the Washington Post. And um, then the Los Angeles Times is owned by a billionaire. And the New York Times has four million subscribers. Uh, they they've quadrupled their sub- subscriber base in the last eight years. They're gonna, those national newspapers and international newspapers, I think, I think will be fine. Um, but when you get below that level, you know, even at our county daily, the Press Democrat Metros. Uh, and The Chronicle in San Francisco, they have a much tougher, harder challenge than the local community. Uh, we, we can be nimble and um, and i- in the ma- the massive economy that we need isn't as challenging. I mean, the, the Press Democrat, for instance, um, a decade ago had over on one hundred thousand subscribers. And they're, they're down to just thirty thousand now. The Chronicle is is one fourth, less than one-fourth of its subscriber base. And I don't, I'm not privy to their finances, but that seems like it's indicative. But but the hopeful part is this. The local news, Sonoma County Local News Initiative is a, is a member of. An organization called the Institute for Nonprofit News based in uh Southern Los Angeles. We're one of three hundred n- nonprofit news organizations. That includes names you might identify with as Politico and ProPublica, Cal Matters. Um, and uh stretched across the country. Um, it's a, it's a prevailing emerging model for journalism. And and what we're all doing is we're, we're creating this new news ecosystem, as we're calling ourselves. So we're not, we're not, we're not independent, competing newspapers. We're, we're creating a a news ecosphere, and we're doing major collaboration. Because we're, we're all, we're all, we're all in it for the same. We're not, it's not a race to come out on top. Um, it's, it's a, it's a sustainable and a surviving mode. You know, for instance, we're, we're small at Sonoma County Local News Initiative, but we're, we're uh full-time partners with Cal Matters. Uh, which does statewide coverage. And and they have a newsroom in Sacramento, right now they're working distantly, but they they have forty journalists covering California. And if you, if you look on our news feeds, Jack, you you'll see almost every day a Cal Matters story. And we're, and we're doing a lot, we're collaborating, um, and the, and we're gonna be doing a lot more real soon. We're, we're collaborating with um Northern California Public Media, KRCB Radio. Um, they're putting out a new signal in a few months, uh switching over to a a much broader coverage. And and my reporters will be live on air. Uh, as we be, we begin to merge our news efforts, so we're mixing media and 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 sharing audience. Where collaboration is a, is a key future strategy to keep local news.
Thank you, thank you, Raleigh. We're out of time, unfortunately, but thank you very much for coming.
Appreciate the invitation very much.
Yeah, so, great, I'm gonna go back to my screen sharing. There we go. Sure, okay. Bill Salibur, you have a way clean joke for us.
Hamel joke.
So, why do nurses carry red pens? In case they, in case they need to draw blood.
Oh, okay, that was.
What's the best thing about Switzerland? I don't know, but their flag is a plus.
Okay, you got any more, is that it?
That's it.
That's it, thank you. So, Joe.
So Barbara?
Yes.
Have fun with your bell.
Wait, 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 wait. Michael, here's your lottery ticket. I'm sorry, you're a loser.
I'm still waiting for my hundred thousand dollars.
Good luck.
I thought I was gonna get a check in the mail.
Joe.
Yes, yes, Barbara, have fun with your bell this week.
Oh, I will.
And, yeah, and everybody, thanks for coming, Larry and Marilyn and. And all the other celebrities that have been here, Bob Rogers, nice to see someone with less hair than me. Yeah, all the Campbells, there's, oh, Larry, I'm telling you, you've got the hair. This, this is, when the sixties come back, you're ready.
If you got it, flaunt it.
Rub it in there, big boy. All right, here we go, guys.
Ring the bell, Barbara.
Ring the bell.
Ring the bell.
Jeez, now I have to remember, it's heavy.
You broke the bell.
Goodbye, all.
See ya.
Round for the meeting about, for our fundraiser.